Mark, that was a go ahead. We are returning from executive section. Our next agenda item is awards and recognitions.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you all for joining us tonight. It feels great to be here again, meeting in person. The first topic is the Black History Month celebration. I'd like to begin our recognitions by celebrating our students who participated in the Black History Month celebration hosted by the Cleveland Heights City Council Vice President Palio Sarin. The event was a powerful experience as it created the space for conversation and exploration of the social significance of Black history from a student perspective. Students shared their thoughts, recited famous poems and contemporary pieces, and even presented original pieces of work. I was very grateful for the opportunity to get students together and involved in such critical conversations. I was also pleased to be joined by our board member Beverly Wright and the panel. The students who participated in the event were from Monticello Middle School Chelsea Gibson, from Roxborough Middle School Savannah Holland, Robbie Caldwell, Andy Yasmin Smith, and from Heights High Taylor Cody, Joy Harris, Deja Love, Juliana Madlock, Sam McKnight, and Cassandra Steele. Let's give those students a round of applause. Please keep using your voices to influence change, keeping in mind the power of a collective voice and the impact it can have on the world. Thank you so much for representing the best of CHUH. If you haven't had the opportunity to watch the event, I highly recommend that you do check it out. We do have it on our website. Next is the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. I'd like to congratulate our athletic director, Joe Damato. Joe has been recognized by the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association for being named a Certified Master Athletic Administrator. To earn this unique distinction, Joe has demonstrated high knowledge and ongoing professional development in the field of athletic administration. He is now in one of a very elite group of athletic directors nationwide to attain this level of professionalism. We want to congratulate you, Joe, and again, thank you for your great, great service to the district. Next, we have our Tiger Team Members of the Month. These CHUH staff members have been recognized by their peers and community for going above and beyond to continuously contribute to the culture of excellence in our district. We want you to know that you are seen and your actions are greatly appreciated. From the Board of Education, we recognize Eric Brazil. From Boulevard Elementary School, Michelle Dawson. From Canterbury Elementary School, Debbie Finesia. From Delisle Option Center, Denise Thompson. From Fairfax Elementary School, Cornelia Meyer. From Garrity School, Lizzie Henry. From Heights High School, Anna Cox. From Monticello Middle School, Daisy Thames. From Noble Elementary School, Freddie Crawford. From Oxford Elementary School, Amnia Abu Salah. From Roxborough Elementary School, Julie Edgar. And from Roxborough Middle School, Ashley Fertig. Again, congratulations to our wonderful winners and thank you for all you are doing in the Cleveland Heights University Heights Community School District for our students, their families, and the entire community. Finally, tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize our social workers ahead of National School Social Work Week, March 7th through the 13th. Our social workers are Leah Burtis, Wendy Berkey, Kristen Campbell, Allison Craig, Kristen Daddis, Edie Fiala, Marissa Grizmar, Josephine Shelton Towns, and Carol Yu. This year's theme is Beacon of Hope: School Social Workers Lighting the Way. School social workers are indeed able to light the way, emphasizing the whole child, collaborating with peers, and linking students and families with much-needed services. They are an integral part of our school communities, and I want to thank them for their steadfast dedication to our students, especially in this truly, truly unique year. This concludes tonight's awards and recognitions, and now I'm going to turn it over to Owen Bisker from the Superintendent for the Student Report.
Thank you Superintendent Kirby, and good morning, good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Owen Bisker, and it is good to see you all again. I hope you and your families are doing well and staying safe. And as a member of Superintendent Student Cadre, I am here to give a brief report about what's happening at Heights High and about my experiences this year at the school. Thank you once again for this opportunity. So athletics have become very exciting these past few weeks, and I will give a brief report about them, then address school matters. The Cleveland Heights Boys Team was represented at the state championship meet on February 27th. The 200 medley relay placed 20th overall, and the 200 freestyle relay placed 22nd overall. The wrestling team had sectionals that same day, and Delaware Richards qualified for the district tournament with a fourth-place finish. Jalen Coleman also qualified for the district tournament, with Alex Cummings, Ramon Ross, and Duran Brown all being alternates. The Boys Basketball Team took care of business in back-to-back Division One sectional home games and advanced to the district semifinals. They play away against Shaker on March 3rd. They beat North Olmsted and Lakewood to advance. The hockey season finished February 22nd with the loss to Walsh Jesuit, and the track team has the state championship meet on Saturday, with many competitors qualifying. Congratulations to all of our sports teams and feats they have accomplished this year, and good luck to all still competing. Now, here are a few important events that are happening at Heights High. It is now March, and school is back in person in a hybrid-shaped style of learning. Kids could still choose to stay virtual if they wanted. Seniors Maple Boucher and Xavier Roth be out 1.5 million other students to earn the rare honor of national merit finalist. Congratulations to them on such an incredible feat. The third quarter ends on March 26th. It has now been about a year since school shutdown due to the spread of COVID-19, and as hard as this year has been, I believe that our community and country as a whole are beginning to take good steps forward. It is hard to speak for everyone, especially those who have lost family members and their jobs, but I like to think that things are getting better now, that people are getting vaccinated. I chose to take hybrid classes, and it is so nice to know how safe I am while I am in the school. We have dividers, and I have not witnessed someone without a mask on. Also, due to the way that schools split up our last names, our classes are kept at a minimum, which greatly ensures our safety. In the last report I gave to the board, I thought that I was confident that everyone working towards bringing kids back to school would do a good job, and even though it has only been a few weeks, I strongly believe that a good job has been done. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Owen.
Yes, thank you very much, Owen. You don't need to stick on, this is, I mean, most people do sign off. You don't need to stay on if you don't want to, but you're welcome to stay on and watch the rest of the meeting. Moving on to the next item, Dan brought forth a resolution he'd like us to consider. Dan, would you take the floor?
Thank you. So, as we all know, the Cleveland Heights University Board of Education has sort of been at the forefront of advocacy efforts around the misappropriation of public tax dollars being sent to private schools in the form of vouchers. It's a very, very complicated problem, which has roots in gerrymandering, has roots in the misuse of public tests. Tests that inaccurately measure, historically inaccurately measure, students of color and students who are from high-poverty districts. So, a group of school districts from around the state are now advocating, pushing the Ohio Legislature, encouraging the Ohio Legislature, to waive the standardized tests for this year, given all of the difficulties around COVID, et cetera. Ohio, it's important to remember also, is one of the final, really handful of states that tests beyond the federal minimum. The state of Ohio adds tests that are not required by the federal mandate. This used to be very, very common, but because of the unpopularity of these standardized tests and the fact that these standardized tests have been shown to be so invalid, most states in the country, the overwhelming majority of states in the country actually, have gone down to the federally mandated levels. Ohio has not. So, districts around the state are encouraging our legislature to do really two things. One is to waive all of the tests that are not federally mandated, and two, to seek a waiver from all tests from the federal government. As we all know, folks who are certainly watching the school board meeting are well aware, the Biden administration disappointed many of us this past week by announcing their intents to break their promise and actually stick with the standardized testing regiment that they led us to believe during the campaign that they were going to discard. However, hope lasts, and the hope is that through states around the country pressuring the federal government, perhaps they will rethink that position. So, the resolution that we have in front of us is toward that end, and it is a resolution to the Ohio Legislature. We have divvied it up, it's a little bit of reading, so we've divided the reading among ourselves. I will begin and wrap up, and I will begin. This is a resolution urging the Ohio General Assembly to waive all state-mandated standardized testing requirements for the 2020-2021 school year, to request a waiver from the state-mandated testing from the U.S. Department of Education, and to declare the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board's support for House Bills 67 and 40, which would fulfill both requests and declare this an emergency.
Whereas it is the statutory duty of the Cleveland Heights University Heights High School School District to deliver the educational program and services to the schoolchildren of our school district, and whereas the members of the board are elected by the Cleveland Heights University Heights Community to ensure that students are healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged, and whereas the elected Board of Education is responsible to the community, including taxpayers, parents, professional educators, and other patrons, as well as the state, and...
Whereas the state of Ohio requires annual statewide standardized testing in accordance with federal mandates, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created instructional challenges and forced educators to quickly adapt to new practices during the 2020-21 school year, and whereas the administration of standardized tests may create additional unnecessary health risks to students and district staff, and...
Whereas the state of Ohio waived standardized testing last spring when learning was disrupted for less than half of the academic year, and whereas the Cleveland Heights University Heights educators already perform formative testing on every district student, tests that during a pandemic are far more helpful and accurate in assessing student needs, and whereas the results of the statewide mandated standardized testing won't be known until after the school year is ended and will be of no help to district students or the district's need to potentially address any disrupted learning opportunities district students may face, and whereas the worst introduction to in-person instruction this board can imagine would be a battery of biased standardized tests given to students that will be useless in determining what those students need to learn academically, and...
Whereas a growing body of academic research shows that standardized tests contain a bias, which results in lower scores for minority students, as well as students who are economically disadvantaged. And whereas the inaccurate data resulting from these biased standardized tests contribute to inaccurate evaluations of the students, their teachers, schools, school districts, and whereas the inaccurate evaluations of schools and districts resulting from these biased standardized tests are inappropriately used to defund these schools and districts through methods that are in direct violation of Article 6, Section 2 of the State of Ohio's Constitution.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District Board of Education that the Board of Education urges the state of Ohio to not require the spring standardized assessments, and we urge the Ohio Department of Education to apply for a waiver from federal standardized testing requirements, and the Board fully supports House Bills 67 and 40, which would do exactly those two things. The Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board finds and determines that all formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken in open meetings of this Board, and any deliberations of this Board and of its committees that resulted from those formal actions were in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements. The Board declares this to be an emergency immediately necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and students of the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District, provided that this legislation receives the affirmative vote of three-fourths of the members elected or appointed to this Board. It shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon passage. And finally, the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board urges the state of Ohio to commit to Article 6, Section 2 of the Ohio Constitution's direction to secure a thorough and efficient system of common schools throughout the state by no longer diverting public school funding to private parties.
So Dan has introduced the resolution, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, unfortunately, we know that the federal government has opted not to waive testing requirements for this coming spring. But there is still value in urging the state government to keep us to the minimum number of tests required by the federal government. And there's also value in the symbolism that we, as a district, stand up to what we know is a very unfair system of standardized tests. For many years, we've had families opt out of tests because they disagree with the way those tests are written and the way the results are used against us. We have had, you know, community forums about testing and what's necessary, what's not necessary. We've had large numbers of teachers come to speak to the board about overuse of testing and which tests they find useful and which ones they find not useful. So I think there's value in this resolution.
I'm going to support it because I feel like children have already lost enough instructional time this year. I would much rather see them in instruction than taking standardized tests. And I'm sorry that our state so far does not see that. So I think we need to send a message.
I agree, I mean, I think that unfortunately, the Biden administration has taken the stand that it has. But, you know, there is the, you know, the old saying, silence is consent, silence is complicity. And I think that some of the best work that we do in this district is to educate our students that they shouldn't just stand by and accept the world as it is, that they should go out and fight like crazy to make the world the way that they want it to be. And to me, this is leadership by example for them.
Yeah, I support the resolution.
Well, I'm going to support this, and I think the main reason for me is, one, I don't like the tests. Two, I think we need to provide some mitigation for our students that haven't been in the classrooms and that have fallen behind. And some of that is obviously going to have to take place during the summer. And if we're going to be doing these standardized tests way before that mitigation can happen, I mean, it's unfair for those kids. And as Jody said, it takes time away from really in-classroom activities that these kids need to be, you know, focused at. Dan, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. It's my understanding that other school districts are supporting this, and you're sort of networked with other school districts and understanding their best practices. This is why you've presented this to us.
Yes.
If there's no other comments, would you take the role, please? Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Moving on to our next item is a public comment. It's new for us to do public comments in person, it's been almost a year. We have three people signed up this evening. The first person, and before you get up, I'm just going to just realist the order of everybody. The first person is Mario, the second person is Shari, and the third person is Melissa. And the way we'd like it to work is on your right, if you can walk down the aisle, and right smack in the middle of the stage, there is, not in the middle of the stage, but in front of the stage, on the floor is a big X, there's a microphone. You just need to stand and talk. If we can't hear, we'll get a signal from our audio people, and I may ask you to start over. But Mario, if you could come up, we have, we allocate five minutes per person.
All right, doing a little test? Are we all good?
We're good, hold on, yeah, we heard a, we got a thumbs up.
Great, hello everybody. My name is Mario Clopton-Zimmer, I am resident with my husband Ryan at 3856 Kirkwood Road. I'm a teacher and a doctoral student, soon to be a doctoral candidate for the degree of Doctor of Education in Education Administration. My research focus is on education equity practices in desegregated suburban schools. My husband is a small business owner here in Cleveland Heights and the Assistant Director of Diversity and Inclusion at the Ohio University. Go Bobcats! We've lived in the noble neighborhoods since this past June, and we love our neighbors and our neighborhood. We chose Cleveland Heights mostly for the schools that will welcome our future children. We chose Heights over all of our choices, over Shaker, over Peachwood, over Solon, my alma mater. On Sunday, like many of us did, I enjoyed the weather, and I went to walk around the neighborhood to meet some of my new neighbors. And most people were outside hanging on the porch, doing yard work. Many of my neighbors have been in the neighborhood for many years, but don't have kids that have gone through the district. And I was proud to talk about what I knew about the schools as a teacher myself now in Shaker. One neighbor talked about and mentioned poor state report card grades, and another mentioned taxes and levies and collective bargaining. And I was proud to mention what I knew of the schools. I was proud to mention that I know that Mr. Carpenter, the principal at Noble Elementary School, is a loving and passionate man who leads his school like a dedicated former teacher would, and that our kids, our neighbors next door, when we both have our kids, will grace the halls of Noble Elementary and be welcomed by Mr. Carpenter. I spoke to one neighbor about being a music teacher, and she lit up. And she talked about her kindergartner thriving in Miss Gray's music class at Boulevard. I talked about the Heights men's basketball team being in the playoffs, and how torn I was being a Shaker teacher, and unsighted about who I was going to support, obviously I'm going to support all the kids. And I talked about the Heights graduate playing in the Super Bowl this past year. And I talked about teaching at Roxborough, learning how to teach my first three years in profession, feeling like I could be the black man, the black gay man, free to teach, free of discrimination and bias in this community. I mentioned international baccalaureate and how our schools connect kids who haven't gone farther than Noble Road to countries and worlds thousands of miles away, opening up their imagination to what they could become in the future. I've lived here nine months, and I know that much about our schools. We chose the Heights because of these things and more, yet our neighbors don't know. My question is, are we doing a good job in between levies, letting our neighbors know, the ones who don't interact with our schools every day of the work that our teachers, our administrators, and our kids are doing? Are we telling them that state report cards were adopted by an Ohio Republican legislature, by people who don't support public education and designed to report these report cards, specifically to make public schools look bad? Are we telling our neighbors consistently, in between these levies, as we're talking at March, that while these test scores are the tools that the state uses to decide how to measure success of schools, that we also know that standardized tests are inherent to racism and based on a white supremacist structure, that even with the most liberal policies implemented, will still perpetuate white supremacy? Are we telling folks that these test scores state that those kids are failing? But maybe it is us, as Generation Xers or Millennials, that are failing, trying to implement and adopt an educational structure for a new generation that seem to fail all of us? Finally, are we doing a good enough job insisting that we improve in the classroom and assisting that we improve the organization of our district and being honest and forthright with the accountability measures that folks are asking for us to do? My husband and I chose the Heights for the schools because we believe in the investment of this district, and that investment will yield a great profit for our world. People who understand racism and white supremacy and privilege and work to transform the neighborhoods eventually settle down here because of the values and the education that is instilled in the community and within our students. We have to do a better job in communicating these values to those who don't interact with our district on a daily basis. Because while these things can't be measured on a map test or on an ACT, our graduates are learning these tools and these life skills because of our schools, and because of that, I am more hopeful about our city and about our state and about our country. So go Tigers!
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shari?
Before I start, I'd like to say thank you to you. I've lived here all my life, my parents, my grandparents, my good friends from here. And the fact that we can still attract people like you, and you want to live here, gives me hope that we're alive and we're shot, and that we can continue to thrive here. Thank you.
Can you just state your name and address for the record?
My address, as well?
Well, just as long as we know how to get ahold of you.
Oh, okay, my name is Melissa Wood. My address is 2192 Cottage Grove Drive.
Thank you.
Do you need my telephone number?
No, we don't need your telephone number, just so we can get ahold of everybody.
Okay, hello to all assembled and to all who are watching. My name is Melissa Wood. I'm here this evening as a parent concerned about the future of our schools. I would like to speak about our security guards and our equity policy. The last time I spoke, I asserted that our chief financial officer does have no more value to our school district than a security guard. You may not share this belief, but it is certainly not too radical a claim in a district that purports to value equity. a claim in a district that purports to values equity. But perhaps your definition of equity is different from mine. I like this definition, courtesy of Kristin Farmer, founder of Berthley Beautiful Communities here in Cleveland. Equity is putting a surplus of opportunity in front of those who have been historically deprived of it. This is a definition that in the realm of education will require radical institutional change. Our superintendent has stated that this will be hard work, courageous work, and must be undertaken at all levels of our institution. It involves access to resources. It involves change in structures as well as individuals. That is why it is so disappointing that our Board of Education pushed 18 poorly paid security guards into arbitration when agreeing to their demands would have cost the district so little. The changes in the structure of medical benefits affect them disproportionately. Equity would provide these workers with compensation to address these new expenses. Instead, they receive a decision from arbitration that not only harms their financial well-being, but is emotionally and intellectually demoralizing. Our security guards are so much more than monitors. They are integral to the successful functioning of our schools. They deescalate volatile situations, encourage, redirect, and diffuse potential outbreaks of anger or stress, all of which requires the building of relationships and attention to the needs of individual students. Why did this contract go to arbitration? And what does that say about our district's commitment to equity? And further, what message is it sending our students? I'll say that again for emphasis. What message is this sending our students? We have a wonderful CTE program that offers students pathways to careers that fit their desires and aptitudes. Some choose the criminal justice program. Graduates from this program could choose to go into the field of security, private or public. So what are we telling them when we go to great lengths to fight fair compensation for adults in the very positions we want our students to aspire to? When we can't spend $9,000 to offer our security guards the same signing bonus we gave our teachers, or an independent workday to parallel that which is given our teachers? When we push our frontline staff to arbitration over modest demands for a living wage? Does this tell our students that security is a viable career choice, one where they can find meaningful work, supportive pay, and professional development? No, it does the opposite. If our students were to look at the board policies around wages and compensation, they would learn that to be paid decently, one needs a letter after your name. The number of letters corresponds to what you are worth in the labor market, and obviously, what you are worth in our school district. Why don't we apply the principles of equity to the compensation of our employees? Our equity training has focused on microaggressions, implicit bias, and the history of marginalization. So why are we not applying this learning to our marginalized workers? I think our superintendent has argued that in order to achieve the goals of the equity policy, there must be change across all levels of our organization. What would putting a surplus of opportunity in front of our lowest-paid employees look like? Imagine, maybe a wage that allowed them relief from economic stress, maybe professional development that offered them opportunity to expand their career goals, maybe leisure time to allow them to focus on family and personal growth. But our superintendent has stated that this type of institutional change will require courage. Do you have that courage? The courage to look at our fiscal crisis and say, if there must be sacrifices, they must come from those most able to bear them? Are you able to cut from the highest earners so low-wage staff are protected from financial crisis? Can you role model equitable pay across the organization? If we are unwilling to talk about wealth as part of the equity puzzle, what is the point of having an equity policy, or talking about systemic racism, or teaching the history of marginalization? Then all the words on the slides and in the presentations are hollow, false promises. Isn't the endgame a world where a child's chances in life aren't limited by skin color or zip code? We can make these schools good places to work and good places to learn, if our stated values are real, and if we have the courage to fight for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shari Nasen. I live at 3347 Bradford Road. It's nice to see you all.
Thank you for being here.
I am the parent of a student who loves Heights High and who believes in incredible people who teach here. I want to thank the board for advocating the way of standardized testing this spring. I also want to state that public comment via phone should remain accessible, whether the board is meeting remotely or in person. I was inspired to recently see Superintendent Kirby on a panel about equity in Ohio schools. It means so much to me that our district prioritizes these concepts and also that we follow through with action. In that webinar, Superintendent Kirby called on ODE to show equity leadership about testing, as you just discussed. I was struck by the concept of equity leadership. I realized that this is what I wish to see more of from our board members and our administrators. As Superintendent Kirby stated, institutional racism hurts everyone. We can extend this concept. Institutional oppression hurts everyone. Inequity hurts everyone. While it is correct to begin with a focus on educational equity as Policy 2260.03 is written, equity needs to be applied at all organizational levels in order to have impact with organizations' deliverables. This means that our deliverable, equitable education for all students, relies upon equitable functioning throughout our organization. As Superintendent Kirby stated, you have to be courageous to engage deeply in the work. Everyone within a school community needs to understand the why of the work. These words are anchoring and inspiring. And yet, and yet, our district just this past month chose to not settle contract negotiations with yet another bargaining unit, forcing a unit of 18 staff members into arbitration, costing our district several thousand dollars that could have been allocated to maintain a livable wage. I asked myself why any leaders of any organization would make that kind of decision. Why would they insist on a process that incurs legal and other fees, rather than efficiently settling a contract and placing those dollars in the paychecks of our highly-valued staff? That is the critical question. Are these staff highly valued? Isn't the assurance of a livable wage part of economic equity? Isn't economic equity part of being anti-racist and anti-oppressive? If our entire mission of equitable education relies upon what happens in the classroom, why has our community been steeping in acrimony about our teachers and other staff? If all staff must invest in equity work, how do we expect to cultivate staff buying if their perceived value is minimized by our own leadership? Our security monitors absorb the same drastic changes in health insurance coverage as our teachers. We all understand that the health insurance line item needed to change. However, the monitors did not receive the signing bonus that would offset a portion of that financial hardship of this adjustment. In a year with no cost of living raises, in a year when they were the sole staff who reported to our buildings during the initial pandemic shutdown, to later be denied hazard pay, which is a grievance currently also in arbitration, over a few thousand dollars, to what end? How can we speak about wrapping around marginalized student populations when our leadership actively devalues frontline staff? We all understand that budget cuts are to come. The thousands of dollars spent on arbitration could have gone into a one-time bonus to offset year one of new health expenses for our highly-valued staff. Monitors could have been offered a day of online professional development as a step toward parity with the teacher's contract. Instead, our leadership chose a costly standoff that results in staff feeling devalued, invisible, and exploited. The optics on this are bad, especially in a community that encourages students to pursue career tech as a pathway to a sustainable profession. I personally fear that after two failed contract negotiations in the past year, the next bargaining unit, Union 102, which includes our lowest-paid staff, will face a repeat performance. This community deeply values the teachers and staff who wrap themselves around our children, day in and day out. I call upon our leadership to be courageous, to act with an eye toward equity throughout all aspects of this organization. Reduce salaries and benefits at the top of the organization in order to ensure a livable wage for every staff member. This is what equity looks like. This is what would make me feel proud of your leadership. As Superintendent Kirby said, the work of anti-racism and the work of equity makes all of us better, and it ensures that students receive a whole education. Anti-racist work is anti-oppressive work. It is a calling out of mechanisms and behaviors that marginalize others. That is what I'm asking you all to do. Stop colluding with the marginalization of teachers and staff. Be brave. Refuse to perpetuate adversarial relationships that you have inherited. Make our equity policy broader than educational mechanisms. Make it a promise to change our district's organizational culture so all members can feel safe, valued, and invested in this meaningful work. Thank you.
Thank you. Usually, we as a board don't respond to comments immediately, but it needs to be said that when we negotiate, there's two sides, and both sides agreed to arbitration. Nobody was forced into arbitration. So, both sides agreed to that. Moving on, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To approve or discuss?
Pardon me?
Is it to approve, or do we need to discuss first?
You know, I can't hear you, Dan. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Is, to approve or to discuss? I just didn't want to be out of order.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Put them.
Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to the shoes and clothes for kids for their donation, for their generous donation, and also the donation for the hand sanitizer from TJ Maxx.
And I would also like to wish well the large number of teachers retiring. I'm looking at a list of names, and I think my children had at least three of them in their time here. So, we're going to miss some very talented teachers.
Any other comments? Would you call the role, please?
Ms. Serini? Sorry, yeah, Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Is Stephanie Lombardo in the audience? I can't see everything.
Yes.
Oh, okay, thanks. First component of the report is the second reading of policies.
All right, good evening, everyone. This is the second reading of board policies, Group A. I just want to acknowledge that this is the second reading of these seven policies. There is no action needed, but we do need to acknowledge that we are doing the second reading. And the third reading will come up next month, and we will be able to take action.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, none for me.
Okay, so next month, we'll have the third reading?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to go through a brief report on a couple of items, and in the future, I'll align my monthly report to board goals and some work we're all working towards. So, you'll see some of that reflected this evening. Before getting there, though, I just wanted to start with information on where the county currently sits as it relates to COVID-19. This is something, of course, that we continue to monitor and watch. And I am pleased that, as you see, in terms of that first slide, we have continued to decrease the cases per 100,000 across not only our county but surrounding counties as well. I'm also pleased, I didn't put a point on here, that, you know, we did receive our first vaccine, and we have the second vaccine scheduled for next week for our staff. We did return to in-person learning, and it is going very, very well. The energy in the schools is positive. Everyone is glad to see each other, students, teachers, teachers, students, teachers, staff. So, it's a really, really nice space. And the guidelines that we have put in place and been developing and been trained on, everyone's doing a great job in aligning, you know, to those guidelines. So, again, I just want to thank the entire community, our staff, our students, parents, community members for, you know, this effort of basically implementing a brand-new school system this year. So, that's going well. Our third quarter does end on March 26, and then we have spring break. Fourth quarter starts on April 6. Our reopening committees continue to plan. Again, as we think about our instructional models, we follow the guidance of the Board of Health. We also engage with our committees, and we also will be engaging with our parents. I have an initial feedback committee, feedback survey out to PCA leadership, but we also will be sending out to all of our families feedback on remote learning, and also interest in making any changes to the model. We kind of want to see where people are. And it's a delicate dance, as you guys know, a lot of factors. And so, we want to make sure we get all of those voices in the conversation. And when we're in the reopening committees, we have that information for consideration. In terms of the equity work, as referenced in the public comments and in our celebrations, our students did an incredible job at the NAACP cosponsored event that they cosponsored with us. And they shared their artifacts from African-American history, things that were important. And it was everything from original poetry to a presentation on the, the way that incarcerated individuals use, lose their right to vote. So, I mean, it was, it was just incredible. So, so proud of our students, and they were from middle school through high school. I mean, just totally awesome. In addition, I had the opportunity to represent the district on a panel that the League of Women Voters held entitled Real Talk, and it was about equity and anti-racism in the state of Ohio. So, it was a second part of a two-part series. So, I was pleased to be able to tell the story of equity that the district has been living since 2016, and also to hear what this looks like in districts across Ohio. It's just a very interesting space, and I learned a lot from that participation. We also had equity training this past professional development session that we just had. So, we were able to train our staff from the other, our other employee groups. Our teachers have already been through some training, but this year, we were able to do some intentional training of our other staff, too, as well. So, I think the equity team for that work. And we're still engaged in an equity audit that the Educational Services Center of Northeast Ohio is conducting for the first ring districts that are interested. It is funded by the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, and so it doesn't cost us anything. But there's, they're kind of looking at all of our data and going to give us a comprehensive report towards the end of spring. The other piece that, that we've been focused on in particular are principal data meetings. So, it is a unique year, but we're still looking at our trends across the academic measures, again, to the points of some of the issues brought up today that are important to us. So, I agree that we don't need the OST to tell us any story. We have our own internal assessment systems. We have grades. We have attendance. And we have been, and we have the Building Leadership Action Plans that all of the staff use to help guide the work. and we have the building leadership action plans that all of the staff use to help guide the work. So, I've had my second round of data meetings with principals and we've looked, you know, they're very extensive sessions and we talk with a lot of detail about the structures that they have in place to respond to the data trends. And as you guys know, it has been a tough year academically because even in this remote learning model, it's been, it's just been difficult, which is why the teachers are so insistent, especially in the elementary school, in having a model where they would see the students every day. So, I just put a couple of slides in here. I'm not going to go specifically through all the numbers, but what the trend that you see, and this is just grades for this evening that I've shared, across elementary school, middle school, and high school, there have been challenges with, we've had, we've seen an increase in Ds and Fs. Every school, every grade level. But this is all before, this data is before we started implementing our hybrid model. So, I'm really excited that we're in hybrid because the number-one intervention that principals indicated would be crucial is to get students in person. They worked really hard with parents to get as many students in person as possible who they saw were struggling academically and also providing other supports. But on average, in our elementary schools, there's an 11%, from last year, 11% increase in Ds and Fs. In our middle school, about 12%. Ironically, our, our high school has the lowest increase on average, it's about 6%. I will tell you that seniors are doing the best with remote learning. They really, they really are. Lowest percentage of Ds and Fs, highest percentage of As and Bs. Our ninth graders and our 10th graders, that is the grade level that is struggling. The high school continues to have additional opportunities for students who need to come in on the Wednesday to come and get their work done, get some focus, get some support. And we'll continue with those pieces. All of this data, we have been diving in very deeply for the past month as the, as schools have been planning. And so, schools also have, have brought this data back to their teams to make sure the interventions in place do, are effective. But this is a, this is a, you know, again, I think the grade, that's the data from our teachers, from our schools. I think that is valuable and I think it's legitimate. And it's also very complicated because there's this tension that we don't necessarily, we have to make sure that we are giving feedback on how students are doing academically and yet we also know we're still in a pandemic. So, that, so as we're looking at the data, the teachers, administrators, they kind of know that and are building in, you know, structures and changes so that we can have a stronger finish to the year. But it is something that, that we'll go through this year and likely in the summer because we'll have summer programming for students as well to assist with some of the grading pieces. And then finally, just on the advocacy front, again, as, as mentioned, we did get the decision on the, from the federal government to have state testing. Now, they did give states the opportunity to be flexible. And we, what we don't want is for any of that testing to count in any way for report cards. So, that legislation is still kind of out there, there's discussing around that. But we haven't heard any decision yet. And I can tell you, the high school, they had a training on Friday just with the staff to get ready for all the testing that has to happen at the high school. So, we haven't yet heard anything to say, we're not doing it, we're stopping that. But hopefully, there will be some changes, but if, at the bare minimum, we know that it would be insane to count anything on these tests towards any accountability piece. The final piece is House Bill 1, which is really the former Patterson Fair School Funding Bill, is circulating, it's in the House Finance Committee. Likely to get to the Senate sometime in April. There will be opportunities, we anticipate, for testimony, but also written testimony. And so, as I get that information, I will be sharing that both with board members in the water community so you know who to contact and when to contact them. We do have an advocacy committee meeting that is scheduled for this week. And one of the, the topics that we have been discussing to the point of the first speaker is how do we tell our story as a part of advocacy? Because it does go hand in hand with the knowledge of the, all the great things we're doing in our district and the context in which, in which we're operating. So, that concludes my report. And happy to take any other questions or comments.
I'm so glad and I really appreciate this, this data from in-house about how our kids are doing. Because while I suspect that this is representative of pretty much every district around.
It is, yeah.
The fact that it's our kids just makes it, you know, just more immediate, more, more in hand, what, what we're doing. And to me, it also reflects sort of the, the social impacts of COVID. You know, it's now been so long and, and those of us who have traveled a few more, more years on this planet, it's, it's a little bit easier, I think, for us to see the big picture and to see that there's better days ahead. But I think that our kids, some of our kids are really struggling at this point to see that there's, that there's the other side is coming. And I think that that's what we're seeing when we see sort of the desperation in kids giving up. And that's what a DNF is too, too often. So, thank you for this. You know, I've had some folks, when we talk about testing and, and the requirements, I've had some folks reach out and say, you know, why don't we just refuse? You know, and, and they come to us because we're the kind of district who would probably do that first. Right? But there's a, you know, I think that, that there's, we have to be very calculated in our, our responses. You know, there's advocacy and there's militancy and there's a place for both sometimes. But the fear, just to answer it, because it's a legitimate question that we hear, to, to answer the question, why don't we refuse? The dangers of refusal wouldn't be necessarily felt by the five board members. There, there are things like our superintendent's license, which is held by the state of Ohio. You know, the, the high school diplomas are certified by the state of Ohio so far. You know, and so, we have to be really careful about and, and strategic about our advocacy. And I think that these are some of the reasons why we don't pursue something more aggressive like just a simple refusal. Then we also get community members who throw out the idea, and I've thought about it myself, you know, as a way of making a very personal statement of just opting out. And that can be kind of tricky because it's, it's a beautiful statement of just, you know, civil disobedience. I'm not going to do it. I don't believe in this and I refuse. And frankly, I can think of just about anything that's better for my student to, to do for those two hours than take that ridiculous test. However, unfortunately, the scores that the, the opt-out scores are, you know, do impact, unfortunately, they can impact our teachers. They can impact the reports that our, that our schools and our district get. So, I'm not here to tell any parent what decision to make for their family, but I just want to make sure that folks are fully aware of, of the ramifications of their decisions. I'm really not trying to talk anybody out of doing anything, but I want people to go in fully armed with knowledge, that's all.
Liz, I'll be very interested to hear more about what we're going to do over the summer to help the kids who need additional intervention and additional support. I've heard from a couple of families that are really struggling and their kids are struggling and they're anxiously awaiting to hear, you know, what, what is going to be available to them in order to help their kids get back on track?
We will have a, a plan before April 1st, but we'll be submitting something to the state April 1st. I can tell you that the summer, there will be things for students at different levels. So, for example, for the youngest learners, an academic component, but we also want to couple it in the afternoon, you know, with something that is more recreational so that students aren't in school, you know, just in academics all day because they also have missed out on the socialization. So, we have a committee that's planning. We have some area community partners that are helping us with this planning too. So, we likely will have some community partners like the libraries and Legary Inc. to, and ODA and Rite of School to, to help us have a broader day. So, that's one option. We're also looking at doing things like literacy camps, math camps for students to make sure that they kind of stay on track with the standards. And on the, on the high school side, we'll have kind of the traditional credit recovery, but even within the school year, the admin team will be working with the, the building leadership team to see what we can do this year, kind of depending on where students are with their grades, to make, to make those adjustments. It's a little different at the high school because it is credit. You have more flexibility at the middle school because you have the four-quarter average situation and at the elementary school, you know, as well. A big discussion or thing we'll have to pay attention to is this, this retention piece. The state is not, and I, now this, I definitely agree with the state. You cannot hold kids back with their, with their grade reading guarantee. We have some, we do have students who have not, just not shown up. So, it's not that they're coming, they haven't shown up. You know, so this is, this is the season now where we're trying to really cap, get, make sure we're getting the kids in and following up with the families and they're coming in person. And we'll probably have to have some extended work for those families just to keep them, you know, to keep them on, keep them on track. But therefore, but even currently, the, our schools are starting some interventions, you know, on that Wednesday day for students who are struggling academically. They each keep lists of every, so all of our, all of our building sites list of every kid. And they have a data wall that is capturing their, you know, their academic data, the grades, the attendance. So, they know who their, their target students are. And certainly, families, you know, can also reach out to me if they want to, you know, because sometimes it could be difficult to get connected and I'll put them right in touch with the administrator who puts them into that intervention.
Well, we know for sure that we're not alone in having to address all of these problems. And, you know, everybody in the United States, every school district in the country and schools all over the world are trying to figure out how to help their students make up for this crazy past year. So, I'm hopeful that we don't have to feel like, what's the expression? I'm, I'm losing my words. That we don't feel like we're somehow lacking because everyone is in the same boat right now. And what we, as a, as a district, need to do is, is to really jump ahead with how do we help the students make up for the time lost or the time altered in the knowledge that every student is suffering from some similar backlog, you know, backsliding or whatever the word is. So, our kids are not alone and, you know, we're going to do everything we can to help them.
Our kids aren't alone, but there is this perception that everybody's in the same boat. And, and I actually will challenge that because there are countries that did send their kids to school. And there are private schools that have sent their kids to school. So, I mean, there is disparity. And, and unfortunately, disparity often does fall on children who are lower socioeconomic, which is a large part of our district. So, I am very, very concerned about that. And I don't want to brush that aside with the whole, well, the whole world is in that situation because they're not. And especially when you look at learning loss, the same learning loss you have in a normal year. Where children who are privileged and have access to enrichment camps and programs all summer long, you know, that, this pandemic has exacerbated the achievement gap and the issues that our district struggles with. And I think we cannot lose sight on that and that we have, we do have to work harder and we do have to make sure that we're doing better for our kids because of this situation. I, I absolutely feel that way.
I heard somebody say recently, Jody, that we're, we're not all in the same boat. We're in the same storm, but we are not in the same boat.
That's a good way to put it.
Yeah, that's a good analogy. Point taken.
Well, I'm really concerned. I mean, when we look at the data, especially we look at the elementary school data, I mean, the gap is getting bigger. I mean, we've had some good gains prior to COVID.
We did.
Those gains have essentially been erased. We've fallen backwards. We all believe, and when you read information from the American Academy of Pediatrics, I mean, they keep on saying, you need to be back in the classroom to overcome this. And I look at your first part of your presentation and the COVID counts. You know, this is something I personally track too. You know, we're down to 180, 186 cases out of 100,000 now. In the heyday, it was close, well, it was over 900. So, the number is dropping and dropping and dropping. And, you know, I think we need to have a plan. You, you obviously have shared your plan. You've also, you've shared with us that there's going to be some mediation happening over the summer. But I also know we have the fourth quarter coming up. And I would love to see what our options are to get at least the elementary kids in five days a week. You know, I say that with the assumption that everything is going to be safe. Teachers will be vaccinated, certainly by then. Staff will be vaccinated. But whatever we can do to support our students and staff to make sure that they're safe. I mean, so, we always know that there's really two sides to this. But I'd love to see or hear from our administrative team on what your plans are for the fourth quarter. I would love to be able to go back five days a week in the elementary schools. I mean, we see it in other school districts, neighboring school districts. This is what Shaker does, for example.
We can look at the month to see, March 16th is the next work session. We'll check to the team to see if we think we'll have something by then, but if not, we might need to do something that last week before spring break.
Are there any other comments for the superintendent? We have the Treasurers' report next?
We do. So, we have the five-year forecast for your approval tonight. So, just for the audience's knowledge, we, the board does approve the five-year forecast every month here at Klinkman University, other districts. The requirement is only twice a year. So, you know, every time that there's some kind of a change, you know, we want to be able to have that front and center, keep the five-year forecast front and center so that we can, especially in this rapidly changing environment, try to make the decisions we need to make. So, there is one change in this forecast from the previous one. I didn't note it in the assumptions, but you'll see that in the, in the forecast itself, the fiscal year '23 bottom line ending cash balance is now a positive $25,489, where in the previous forecast it was about $125,000 negative. So, what that is, or that's a result of the Human Resources Department this week gave us some information about the supplemental contracts for this year and where they were going to end up in terms of what we were, what we, what we had versus what was in the forecast. So, there's about $150,000 savings in supplementals. So, the salaries and wages line item in fiscal '21 is $150,000 less. And so, you'll see the result of that carrying through. Really, the, the biggest visible impact, I guess, would be that $25,000 positive in '23. So, again, it was, it was a change that we became aware of, so we put it in immediately for your approval tonight. The one good thing I will note with this is, and Mr. Posh, you'll recall this, we have, we have to submit a deficit plan to ODE. They'd asked about that because our five-year forecast back in November showed a deficit in fiscal '23. So, now that, now that we have a positive balance, we'll resubmit this five-year forecast. I've already spoken with them and, and this will be sufficient in terms of our deficit plan, at least for their purposes. So, that's, that's it in terms of what's different. As, as Ms. Kirby mentioned, you know, the Fair School Funding Plan, we're still keeping an eye on. State funding, it is what that legislation is going to look like for the next biannual budget. We're still keeping an eye on. still keeping an eye on it. We don't know what that might look like yet, but we're positive and hopeful that it might bring us a little more money. Uh, and we are expecting, again, another round of CARES money that we are hopeful bring us a, a pretty significant amount of money, although we don't know what the restrictions on that will be yet either. Uh, but so far, everything is, is moving in a, in a positive direction in terms of the forecast from previous ones.
Any questions for Scott? Do I have a motion to approve the five-year forecast?
I motion that we approve the five-year forecast.
Second?
I second.
There's no discussion. Would you call the roll? Ms. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Pash?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. Onto the board report, the president's report. I wanted to point out an op-ed that was written in The Plain Dealer this past Sunday by Peter Robinson, who is a former school board member in Shaker. And he talks about Ed Choice. He talks about House Bill One. And I'm going to read one paragraph here because it's just so critical that we just need to remind our community of this. Um, they're basically talking about the Cleveland, he's talking about the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District in his op-ed. So far this year, twenty-four percent of students enrollment reported by the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District are Ed Choice private school vouchers, up from twenty percent the previous year and thirteen percent the year before that. Thirty-nine percent of the district's state funding, or eight point nine million, is projected to pay for private school tuition. We need to remind everybody that there's no compensation in our budget to get additional state funding. That is money that is just paying for private school kids. And these are kids that don't use our schools. I mean, the whole model of Ed Choice is you take a kid out of the pri-, you, you take the kid out of the public sector, you give them some money, you share the money, and then that person goes to a private school. You know, in our case, that burden is one hundred percent on us. And I'm, I'm okay if a family makes a decision to, to not go to our buildings. What I'm not okay with is us having to pay that cost with no additional compensation. Because what happens is it comes out of the pocket of the kids that are in our district today. So this is just a really, I, I thought it was a nice article. I would, I would encourage you to go to Cleveland.com or The Plain Dealer, if you still get it, and read the article. It does talk about House Bill One and how essentially, um, eighty-nine to nine percent, eighty-nine to nine of the House, um, leadership in Columbus wanted to get this passed this past fall. And it got roadblocked in the Senate by one Senator, Matt Dolan, because he wanted to have more public testimony. So we know that public testimony is going to be happening in the April timeframe, and I think we need to give him his public testimony. If this was, if this reform is good enough for the clear majority of an already divided Ohio House, it's certain to pass in the Senate and it's going to give us some fiscal relief. When I say fiscal relief, I mean, I don't want to promise it's not going to mean school levies, but it's going to reduce the need for school levies in districts like ours. And it's still going to give people the ability to make their choices and go to private schools if that's what they choose to do. But it's not going to be taking monies away from our students in our district. So I think that's something that's really telling. Um, along the same lines, last year, we introduced, um, a plank to the OSBA, the Ohio School Board Association, to help them guide their lobbying. And a piece of our plank was actually rejected. And it came to my attention last month from a school board member in Tuskegee Valley. Um, and she's actually one of the Northeast Ohio regional leaders, the OSBA. She's asked us to put our plank back on. Um, and basically this is, and it's, it's, it's basically two, uh, two bullet points. I mean, the first one is, um, OSBA supports legislation that requires all vouchers to be funded in a way that does not deduct from or diminish funding to public school districts. And the second item is places a cap on the amount of money a district can lose to vouchers. And this was rejected because people thought it would give too, too much credit to vouchers, even though we're against vouchers. But I'd like to get everybody's opinion on whether or not we should try to reintroduce this to OSBA.
I'm probably in, in the minority on the board when it comes to this. But, um, my belief is that by asking, let's say that we got it. Let's say we got it on the, on the, um, platform and we got it approved and, and Ohio changed its funding to do that. The, the problem with that is that the funding bucket, as I see it, isn't growing. And so, um, no matter how this is funded, it is still going to be fundamentally diverting public tax dollars to private schools. Now, it may reduce the burden on the Cleveland Heights, University Heights City School District. It almost certainly will. But it is still fundamentally wrong to be diverting public funds to private organizations, in my mind. It is still a violation of, um, the Ohio Constitution. And, um, therefore, I, I think that we're, we would be sort of giving a blessing to this, you know, what is, in my mind, still, um, a, a really just a wrong decision. I understand the motivation behind it because it would be an improvement and it would likely distribute the discomfort more evenly around the state. Um, but it's, it, to me, it's a, it's a non-solution solution. Just, just my take.
I'm going to, I, I mean, Dan, obviously you have every right to have your opinion and I understand it. Um, but I look at the issue of vouchers. It didn't happen overnight. And it's something that, you know, we can take this extreme stance that it's wrong and it shouldn't happen, but we're not winning anything in that stance. And if we want to be successful, we have to start chipping away just as, as how the situ-, situation was created in the first place. And whether we like it or not, there's a whole bunch of people down in Columbus who are making laws, who, this is their position. And, you know, they think they're in the right, every bit as much as, you know, the other, you know, we think we're in the right. But I think that we have to fight it every way we can. And what I don't want to happen is that we don't fight it and it continues to get worse and worse and worse. Because if you look at our budget already, we're close to ten percent of our budget is going out the door to private schools. What's, at what point? I mean, twenty-five percent, fifty percent? I mean, when you look at the way our numbers are growing, it is not sustainable. The whole system is not sustainable. And I've been saying for years, we're the canary in the coal mine. And I just, I think that we have to do everything that we possibly can. And if getting them funded a different way and it spreads that pain across the state and that gets something to change and it gives our local taxpayers some relief, we ought to go for it. That's how I feel about it.
I really don't disagree with a word of what you just said.
Well, Dan, I mean, I think if you look at the wording, and I can share all this with, with everybody again, and I'm okay to reword if there's wording issues here. But, I mean, it comes down to we're disa-, we're, we're saying that with, I'm not disagreeing when I say don't disagree with you. I'm saying I disagree that the state is deducting money from us to pay for a political program that they want to implement. And this has been, and, and I say, then find another way to fund it. Don't steal money away from public school kids. Okay?
Yeah.
Legitimately, if there's a child in our district and, you know, they want to go to another school district, so if the money follows that person, I might feel better about it. But when one hundred percent of the funding is being pulled out of our bucket, that's where I have a problem. And we have to remember how all this started and the misinformation. I mean, we, we, we were all at the library when we heard about the, the pro-voucher thing where it doesn't hurt your public schools.
Right.
And it's like,
It does.
It does. And it's a lie. Okay? And that's what everybody keeps on saying. But they keep on having these incremental things to basically defund public education because that's what this is all about. They don't like public schools. They want everybody to go to private schools. And there's a whole, there's a whole lot of reason behind it, which I don't agree with.
It's not even one for one. It's, each child is taking, what is it, two and a half times?
Right.
Uh, give or take?
Definitely. I mean, it's hard to tell now because
Yeah.
the, the cap. But what's, what's ironic to me is here we're living in a community that has the most school choice of pretty much anywhere else in the state. We have every kind of religious school you can imagine and we have a plethora of private schools. And yet, because of school choice, our taxpayers are facing an unfair burden. And it's ironic to me that when this is all cloaked in the terms of, well, school choice, and yet that choice is costing those of us who live in this community far more than other communities because we have the choice.
You know, if we had the eight point nine million dollars that they took away, and keep in mind, this is annually, we wouldn't be, I mean, if you just do the math on, on the school levies, we wouldn't need school levies. Okay?
Absolutely not.
I mean, that's sort of looking at this from the perspective of today and our current fiscal operations. But we have to do something. We have to fight this.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jim. I don't think now is the time to throw in the towel. Because, I mean, when we look at how much is taken out of our budget and how much is taken away from the kids that actually sit in the seats in our district, that's the thing that bothers me the most. And I think we have, you know, uh, we have worked too hard to try to get this litigation. I think we need to continue and we need to continue to fight for our students and for our district.
There's also the point that we shouldn't have to fight this battle alone. And having OSBA, um, include a plank in their platform that helps us makes our burden easier to bear. Because let's get them to do some of the politicking too. Because otherwise, you know, it's us going down to Columbus and it becomes too easy to just discount, oh, it's Cleveland Heights, University Heights City Schools. They're the ones who are most affected, therefore they're the ones who come to complain. But if we could get the, the clout of the Ohio School Boards Association to help, I think that would be beneficial.
So what I'll do is I'm going to pass along this wording to everybody, just so everybody can see the wording. And if it's an issue, Dan, of wordsmithing something in a way, so you make your point, which I'm, which I understand, um, you know, maybe that's a way that we can get this thing pushed through OSBA.
Well, if you think that it's at all time sensitive, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, I, I don't think that there's anything mutually exclusive about what you've said and, and the other pathways. So if you want to propose this tonight, I'll, I will lean in on it without any hesitation. And, you know, if, you know, if we can get a unanimous decision tonight, I'm all for it.
I guess the question is, when does, when is OSBA going to vote again on the changes to their legislative platform and when we have to have that in? Because I believe the process is we have to vote on a resolution, resolution that we want to submit this to OSBA. Once that passes, then it gets submitted to OSBA. That was the process we had to follow last year when we were, um, providing it. And if I remember, last year, the deadline was like towards the end of May, if I'm recalling correctly.
I, I haven't made the calls. I mean, I'm just reacting to another school board leader that's reached out to us and asked us to do this because we're the most heavily affected school district proportionally with vouchers. I'll find out. I'll get it, I'll get it in front of you. And I'll get some wording that I hopefully is going to be agreeable to everybody.
Good.
Is that our next, uh, our, the next time we meet, is it for our board retreat?
Uh, we have a work session.
Twenty-seven?
Work session on the sixteenth.
We have a work session on the sixteen.
Okay, okay.
Sixteenth of November, twenty-seventh.
And then our board retreat.
Do that. So the other two pieces of my report is the Lay Finance Committee is going to be meeting at the end of the month. Um, they're going to be discussing the presentation. They're, they're going to be relooking at the five-year forecast and they're also going to be looking at the presentation that Scott made regarding the performance audit. Um, I think we're trying to get some feedback from them to look at that and maybe do some research. I'll get back to you on all that. And I emailed everybody to hold the date for a joint meeting in the first part of April with, uh, the Cleveland Heights Council, the University Heights Council and the library.
Is that going to be here?
We're going to be hosting it. It'll be a virtual meeting because there's this, there's just
A virtual?
too many people in one space. Um, but we're going to be the hosts.
Okay.
And, um, you'll get more information on that. So that's the conclusion of my report. Are there any board committee reports?
I don't have a committee report, but I just want to, um, again, say how proud I am of the students that were participated in the Black History Month
Yeah.
program with the city, the NAACP. And, uh, it was just, you know, like, um, Superintendent Kirby said, it was just, it was mouth opening, you know, to see the perspective from our students. And we do, we, we have some, some bright, phenomenal leaders that's coming up. Uh, it, it was good. The dialogue was good. I also had an opportunity to attend the, um, the, uh, professional development, uh, equity, uh, training. And I went to the, uh, AVI's and supervisors and aides, uh, session. And it was, um, three of the, uh, three of our, uh, staff. It was Ms. Washington, Ms. Gregory and Ms. Maldough. They did an excellent job with that equity training and, uh, learned a lot, uh, the tools that they use. They use data, uh, the feedback from the staff. The staff really appreciated the training. And at the end of the training, I learned that it was their first time doing the training and they did a phenomenal job. So thank you, uh, Superintendent. Yeah, for your team. They did a, they did a great job.
Excellent.
I've got a couple of updates. Um, first, I wanted to, um, just remind folks, those of you at home, um, the Heights Coalition for Public Education is, um, hosting another book discussion. Um, this time it is on, um, the book is Schoolhouse Burning by Derek W. Black. And, um, this will take place virtually on, there's three nights, March tenth, March twenty-fourth and April seventh. You don't have to participate in all three. Um, I really need to read the book. Um, so there's that. It's a, you know, the, the Coalition's book discussions are so well done. Um, we're really lucky to have them. And if people are not yet, um, I would encourage them to follow, uh, to like and follow Heights Coalition for Public Education on Facebook. Um, our advocacy task force as Coalition for Public Education on Facebook. Our advocacy task force, as Liz mentioned earlier, will be meeting again this week on Thursday. We have also scheduled another meeting of the Early Childhood Task Force, which is really great that that's being, being reconvened. That's in April. And then just an update on the Ed Choice lawsuit. We have now nearly 60 districts who have signed up as plaintiffs for the lawsuit. That is nearly 10% of the districts in Ohio have, have come on board. There is a website, which is vouchershurtohio.com, and they're also on Facebook as Vouchers Hurt Ohio. Would encourage folks to like and follow those just because it'll get you in the loop of getting information. And around the, the lawsuit, we hired a very well-respected law firm known to everyone in education circles, certainly in Ohio, and we have the public relations outfit that managed the successful public relations campaign that beat back SB 5 about 10 years ago. So the lawsuit is certainly moving forward and picking up steam.
Last week, I attended the interim Board of Education Presidents' meeting, and there was, I think there were two main topics that are relevant to us. One was a sort of broad-ranging conversation about equity and different districts starting down the path of equity work. So I was able to give them a little summary of what we've been doing and for how long. And the other main topic was a sort of curiosity about graduation and whether districts have, are noticing a change in the number of students who will be eligible to graduate this year. And it was a big question. There are no answers yet, but it sort of got me thinking, and I don't know whether we're going to see any noticeable change.
We hope that.
We probably will, right? Because why would we be different from anybody else? And next week, the Strategic Planning Committee is meeting again, which we had a brief hiatus. So that's, that work continues.
And Liz and I attended the CHUHPTA council meeting, and there was a lot of great discussion about what each of the individual schools were doing to celebrate Black History Month. A lot of really exciting programs, and I really give them credit for continuing to do programming even when, you know, it's hard to do programming in a remote environment.
Any new business? Unfinished business? Correspondence and announcements? Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
I motion we adjourn.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Sereni?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, and thank all of you, my tech folks. Kethin, nice to see you.